Good morning, everybody. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five here in Palm Desert. And would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Good morning, everybody. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-five here in Palm Desert.
Don't look at me. I'm looking at staff.
Here we go. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Let's just give it a few seconds.
Okay. Didn't want any to sully our pledge. Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Morning.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for agenda today?
No, sir.
Good morning, President Powell.
Morning.
Vice President Estrada.
Just turn the volume down.
Director Aguilar.
Yeah, sure. We could talk about the Dodgers.
Or the Bears.
I didn't see any football yesterday. What happened with the football?
Oh, they won in the last minute on a field goal. From the guy that had been moved up from the practice team that day.
Oh, gosh.
He was the forty-niners kicker.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Moody. Moody. It was impressive.
I was exhausted watching the Dodgers. I had no energy to watch football.
Yeah. And then I don't remember who the Falcons were playing, but Atlanta won, which was kind of a surprise.
They played the Bills.
The Bills, yeah, there you go.
They beat the Bills?
Yeah, pretty handily.
Really? That's an upset. Yeah, how about those Dodgers?
Do we have to do the whole thing? How about them Bears?
I think that's it.
I mean, we had a game earlier in the season where Yamamoto pitched eight and two-thirds shutout innings, and we lost the game. Right? I mean, so I'm like, no, not again.
He goes his best.
Okay.
Welcome back.
You know?
I think we're good.
Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no additions, deletions, or adjustments.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time?
Yep, please, sure, no.
One item on the consent calendar is a motion to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass five-oh. Seven A. Carrie Alphonse, good morning. This is our Fountainhead. And I don't think we need to go into the details of the project itself, right? Because that's not really what we're doing today.
Oh, Carrie, that one's, can we have you come over here? Because that mic was having issues this morning. We have that temp, but I think it's just easier to work with this one. I know it's just a technology day. There you go.
Okay, good morning. So, yeah, I was just going to just reiterate the recommendation.
That's fine, go ahead.
So, if the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors wishes to reconsider the August twelfth, twenty twenty-five rejection of the waiver request from Fountainhead Development, then a board member who voted in the majority on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five would need to make a motion to reconsider said rejection. Any other director, including one who voted in the minority on the original motion, may second the motion to reconsider. If that motion passes, and the original matter will be brought back at a future board meeting, and a new original motion on the waiver request would be in order.
So, is there a member of that three-person majority who moves approval of seven A? Do you want to take comments?
Sir, we do have public comment on this. I don't know if you wanted to.
We can get the motion in a second. Okay.
You can.
Yeah, let's see if, how far we get. If there's no motion, we'll go straight to comments. And remind us who those three are.
Powell, Aguilar, and Nelson.
Well, I'll start off with the comments. Since I think there's some thinking going on here. But I, when the applicant came the first time, they had requested for the item to be on the agenda. I think there was some work that was done to try to do that. And unfortunately, when the item was before us for consideration, we were not able to hear from the applicant, for whatever reason. I think the applicant had come, was preparing to present some information to us that would have probably mattered, probably relevant. And so, for me, you know, I'm still looking forward to seeing that presentation. There's a lot that we're doing with this developer, not just with them, but with a lot of other folks. And so, you know, I would like to have the opportunity to hear that presentation. So, I think we would only be able to do that if the item was before the board at a future board meeting.
Their comment? Okay. All right, so if we do have members of the public wishing to comment on this item, now would be a good time to do that.
Okay, so we will go in the order of these cards that I have. Craig Smith.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Craig Smith, and with Fountainhead Development. And I want to thank the board for...
Mr. Smith, your mic is off. See how the light, it's off? If you touch, there you go. It's very finicky, so if you touch it, it turns on.
Is it on now?
It's on now.
Okay. You have to touch this? Get away from it?
No, just don't touch it.
Just your hand, don't touch it. There you go. Thank you.
It was unfortunate.
Can you restart his time, please?
Thanks.
Proceed. It was unfortunate that the initial action was taken, without us having a chance to represent our facts. During the initial action, there were several questions the board had that were not answered or partially answered. We'd like to have the opportunity for the item to be reconsidered, to have the chance to supply the information the board was looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have... Next, we have Aaron. Is it Tafani, Tafari?
Tafani.
Tafani, okay, I couldn't tell if that was an R or an I. Thank you.
Dear board members, dear board members, thank you, appreciate all of your time. I really appreciate working with staff, too. They've been wonderful. You really do have a great staff, and I genuinely mean that. It's a complicated system to manage, and they do a great job of it. There was a miscommunication with the last, when we were placed on the agenda about that agenda item, and we had no idea. And it just, we would have loved to have the opportunity to present to you why it's so important and the facts behind why we feel that this unique situation is warranted for really deep consideration and approval. And just, I want to speak to what we've done since about the end of October of last year, is when we found out there was a capacity issue. We had approvals for our entire project for considerably more EDUs than we utilized in the first phase. And when we found out that there was no longer capacity, we immediately jumped into action. We met with staff. At the beginning of this year, in a meeting with staff, we were instructed to, you know, there is a, improvements need to be made, and we suggest you to go work with these other developers and go form a group and take this on. And they were kind enough to provide us with a list of those other developers, which we took the lead on, and we organized an entire group, a consortium. We have a consortium agreement amongst the other five other developers. We have hired the same engineer who's here today, and we have entered into a special agreement with CBWD, and we have already completed the first phase of plans. And we're designing not just the portion of the pipe that needs to be installed, the sewer line that needs to be installed for our project. We're designing the entire two-mile section of this pipe, and then we're paying for that. And it will be for the benefit of the district and future developers. So, we're really taking the lead on that. We've prepared the plans. We had a preliminary meeting with Armando, who was great and gracious enough to give us some initial feedback. And we expect to be submitted with those full plans by the end of the month. We're taking it very seriously, and we're working full speed ahead. We have calls every Monday, all the consortium talk. We are working on this very diligently. And the importance is, it does take time to do those plans and improvements, but we have delivery requirements with our Dutch Brothers tenant that we entered into before we knew about this additional sewer capacity issue. And if we don't get the Dutch Brothers open, there's a chance that that could, that deal could fall apart. It's a corporate tenant, corporate lease, and there's delivery requirements. And if we don't hit that, it puts the deal in jeopardy. And if that's put in jeopardy, our ability to complete all these improvements, it just, it does not help our efforts in getting the big-picture item that we're all here to help and accomplish, is to get this sewer improvements installed. So, as of, in light of all that, we just really, really would appreciate the chance to present the facts to you all at another hearing and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Lasanti Okuma. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. Thank you again for listening to us. And like Aaron said, we've done a lot of work on this project. And I, myself, have been personally involved in this project since two thousand sixteen. I've been in the trenches. And we worked with staff extensively through the process, installing our first phase of the project. And we've worked in good faith with staff since two thousand sixteen. And what I'd like to say is, you know, when we thought we were going to be back before you to have this item considered, we had done a lot of work in preparing for that meeting. We gathered data, you know, we talked to our tenants. We've been looking into the whole capacity issue, which, you know, kind of caught, I think, everyone off guard on this project. And so, we had prepared for that meeting, and unfortunately, you know, due to circumstances, it didn't happen. So, we're just asking for the same consideration, good faith consideration, given all the work that we've put into it since October of last year, to be able to present those facts. There were a lot of data that was discussed during that August meeting. And, you know, we'd like to have the opportunity to respond to those set of data that was presented. And with that, I would ask that the board please give us the opportunity, one more chance, to be able to speak to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have John Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, President Powell, directors. My name is John Rodriguez. I represent High Tech Consulting. We are the civil engineers of record for the consortium that's been put together for this stretch of sewer that's on Varner Road, nearly two miles. Want to thank you all. I'm not going to reiterate what Aaron already said, because he said it so well. But I just want to make sure that the board understands the financial obligation that they've entered into with this project. Again, we are designing the entire deficient area along Varner Road with the idea that we would install the first, what we're calling the first phase, which is the area that's severely deficient. And we've had nice meetings with staff to go over not only alignments, but what's necessary and what needs to be done. Again, we'd like to present that to you all to help with this Dutch Brothers coffee waiver request. So, we thank you for your time. If there's anything technical that needs to be answered, of course, we will do that at the time that we are given the ability for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Joaquin Tejirina.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Joaquin Tejirina with the Office of Economic Development of Riverside County in support of the request by Fountain Development for reconsideration of the rejection of the waiver request. We feel that the project, although small, does contribute to the local economy. There are sixteen jobs that will be available at twenty dollars and higher for those, in that little niche that we need right now. We're in a downturn, and we don't know what's on the horizon for this. But these, these jobs are important for these young workers that are maybe in high school and going to school, college, and also some of our mature folks that depend on these types of jobs to kind of learn and then also sustain themselves. So, fully in support. Thank you.
And that was the last speaker that I had, unless there's others. Mr. Alvarez, you had a, your agenda says a topic not listed on the meeting agenda. Is it in fact for seven A?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then Martin Alvarez, thank you.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. My name is Martine Alvarez. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the City of Palm Desert. And we're here in support for the opportunity for Fountainhead to have an opportunity to come back to the agenda and provide some additional details and information to potentially move this project forward. We've partnered with Fountainhead, fully entitled. We've been working with them on, basically, on a weekly basis to make sure this project moves forward. It's a critical economic development project, not only for the City of Palm Desert, but for the region. It is really the center of the valley. It creates, like Mr. Tejirina mentioned, creates jobs, creates opportunity for folks to have access to amenities. So, we're fully supportive of the opportunity for the board to hear what potentially can be able to happen in this area. We know there's challenges in this area. We're working with them as well to see if we can enhance opportunities to upgrade the infrastructure in the area. And so, we're here to just partner and be able to provide any information you may have. Happy to answer any question you may have.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
That is the last speaker we have, I believe. Correct? Okay.
Just want to follow up on Joaquin. I can't even see you now because of the screen. But these young people jobs, my mother-in-law just celebrated her ninetieth birthday, and she's working full-time on her feet. And she probably wouldn't be nearly as healthy or vibrant if she weren't active. And so, for anybody thinking about getting older, you might want to keep that in mind. Stay active, keep your brain going, keep your body going. It's good. All right, go ahead, Carrie.
I didn't have anything else, unless you have any questions for me.
Peter, I think you made the motion to bring this back in the first place, and so, I mean...
Right, so I'll, yeah, I'm ready to make a couple of comments, too. So, yeah, I'm going to make the motion to bring this back. But I will say that, you know, from Carrie's presentation from before, that the sewer line capacity is fully subscribed and, at this time, even over, it's oversubscribed, and it's having some challenges with its capacity as far as demand goes. So, if those types of problems aren't solved, and I'm, it's very positive to hear that the consortium is moving at full speed ahead, you know, all hands on deck. And I guess my comment would be, you know, if this is such a vital project to the community, and I have a Dutch Brothers within walking distance from my house, and I don't know if I've ever gone by that Dutch Brothers and not seen at least four or five cars. So, obviously, it's a popular venue. But if there could be some creative solutions wrapped around the potential of adjusting working hours for, you know, high-capacity times, you know, I think it was mentioned that during flood times, that it could overwhelm the system and overflow. And I don't know about you all, but, you know, I've lived through sewer coming up through the shower, and it's no fun, believe me. And I don't want the district to be responsible for that, or this project to be responsible for that, and, you know, sewer coming up through other businesses and so forth and impacting them. So, if you all can, can, through this consortium, work some maybe creative solutions of how to overcome those obstacles, you know, I'm willing to listen when we bring this back, or if we bring this back. But I'll make the motion to bring the item back at a later date with further information from both the consortium and the district.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
So, I agree with, I have similar concerns. I mean, we have guidelines that we follow for a reason, and it's to avoid problems that potentially, if we don't follow those guidelines, we create problems. And one of the things I recall from the first meeting on this was the existing Dutch Brothers using significantly more water than what they said they were going to be using. And I think that's, I'd like to hear that again also. It was like, what are we, how do, can we restrict that, or is there some way? I mean, I know it's already oversubscribed, so it would be a little, a little problem instead of a bigger problem. You know, maybe there's a timing solution. Maybe there's a way for the group to accommodate this extra capacity in their existing numbers. I don't know. I mean, but these are the sort of things that I would like to hear as it comes back. Because I do think that the, you know, staff is being faithful to what we need to be faithful to as a provider of these services. So, how do we, how do we do both, you know? That's really my question. Is there any other discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I have a comment, John. So, I would agree with my colleagues, and I'm willing to give this a fair hearing again. But I am interested in the tenant commitment and the timing for that tenant commitment, and how long our process is going to take, and if that still works with your timeframe. Because we have only a couple of meetings left before the end of the year. In some cases, we're, we may not have a majority of board members present. So, can somebody comment on your schedule with the tenant? And if there's ability to prolong a final agreement with them in order to get this done?
Yeah, and if I may, that's the sort of background and information that if this motion passes to reconsider, I would recommend we bring it back and discuss at that time, if that's okay with you, Director.
Yeah, I don't know how different that is from what my other colleagues just said.
That's true.
I would say it's fair game. It's just a quick, a quick question, you know, short answer. Yeah, go ahead.
It's not so much we're going to answer the question today. It's that we're going to at least let you know what we want to hear at that next meeting.
Yeah, we're, the timing is, the expected groundbreaking is in January. The plans are fully approved at the city and ready to move forward. This is the one issue we're kind of stuck on. And so, because of the uncertainty, we, there's no groundbreaking plan before the end of the year. So, January is our anticipated ground, desired groundbreaking time, in which case it would be about, you know, then they would be open for business about, you know, nine months later approximately. So, hopefully, you know, we can be very close to having the improvements done. But it's still just, there's a potential, you know, twelve months that, if they can't start their work at that time, and they can't start it until they know that there's going to be the right, the ability to, and we'll explain this more in detail at the next meeting. But there's, they can't start the work if they know that they're not going to be able to. But if they know they would be able to, they can start the work, and then that solves the timing issue.
Understood, understood, thanks.
And we're prepared to come at the very next meeting because we had already prepared our presentation for the last time we were going to be on. So, we don't need extra time. The very next meeting would be definitely consistent with our abilities to present all the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to vote.
So, I think, just briefly, Director Aguilar wanted to know that so that we could make sure we bring this item back when everyone's going to be here. And so, I know, President Powell, you are not going to be here in November.
Yeah, I think I'm...
And so...
What day was that, in November?
November eighteenth.
I can bring it back at the next meeting on the twenty-eighth, if everyone's going to be here.
You might be better off without me.
Ordinates.
But yeah, you're right. I will not be able to attend on the eighteenth.
Or I can work with Sylvia to make sure that everyone's going to be here and bring it back on that, on that specific date.
In December?
In October, right?
I can bring it back on October twenty-eighth.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
October twenty-eighth, I do show everybody, but I do show, Director Aguilar is just going to have to leave a little earlier, but he will be present for the meeting.
Okay.
And then November is, Powell will be absent. And thus far, I show everybody here for December.
Yeah.
Our last meeting of the year, December ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, good to sort that out.
Yeah, it sounds like October.
Yeah, October's.
October.
Fine.
Okay, October twenty-eighth.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, we do have a motion and a second. So, is that going to be included as part of the motion or just directive? Okay.
This is just to reconsider. So, we have the motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Get that passed five-oh. Put it on your calendar. What?
Jolping it, it's going to be bad.
Oh, it would be bad. No, I'm not worried about that.
I kind of like it. I like the lights off.
Was the dimming intentional? No?
That's intermission time.
I'm taking a nap.
Expect the screen to come down. Next is seven B. This is just approving the solicitation of bids for this lift station. Armando, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of board, audience, and fellow staff. We're here to seek approval of the solicitation of bids for the construction of Lift Station eighty-oh-three Upgrade Project, specifications twenty-twenty-five. This lift station, better known as the Cook Street Lift Station, it's a key facility, one that we depend heavily on. It's right across from the Palm Desert High School. And on general terms or big terms, it in essence takes about a third of all the flow within Palm Desert and some parts of Rancho Mirage. It's a critical facility that we depend on.
Is this lifting to Cook Street or away from Cook Street?
This is coming into Cook Street, lifting up and into the warp tent.
Headwork?
Warp, warp, yeah. Water Recommission Plan Number Ten. And it does it through a thirty-inch force lane that goes across the storm channel. It's critical also to know that this lift station was kind of built right around my birthday, nineteen seventy-four.
I didn't know you were there.
Although I was born in nineteen seventy-two, but more or less two years, it's about the same. It is aged.
Way to work that in.
Wow.
It's pretty old and it's a structure.
Watch it.
That's how, exactly how I feel.
Watch it, Armando.
But that takes a little bit of pressure on maintaining reliability, resiliency, redundancy, and capacity. Because these pumps, it's really hard to get any parts. The electrical is hard to get parts as well. While our maintenance staff have done a great job to maintain, we are struggling here with this lift station. So, we're trying to reestablish those things, the reliability, resiliency, redundancy, capacity, by doing, updating the pumps. It's really hard for us to go into the site with big vehicles because there's a huge elevation difference between Cook Street and the lift station. So, there is some grades that we have trouble with, with our long vehicles and heavy. And we're also trying to establish reliability and redundancy, especially when there is a storm event. We don't have any storage capacity. And so it'd be nice to have thirty minutes of just response time. So that if there's a failure in the pumps or there's a run-in that we would be able to move, mobilize to the site. And so we're gonna do a, a, a total upgrade, uh, both with the new wet well and the storage. In addition to the new pumps and new uh electrical control. I stop, I will stop here when my percentage to see if there's any direct questions I can ask.
Yeah, I have a question, um, Armando, the, it mentioned, the staff report mentions um. Some of the improvements were directed to odor control. And I'm wondering, have we had a lot of odor complaints?
We don't have had a lot of odor controls, too, I think our staff does a great job of maintaining. Being invisible is, is to the community and just providing a service is what we uh try to. Have a go on and we, I think our, our operations staff does a great job. We'll be implementing a more robust and actually bigger order control, just so we can keep it at the, at the same level of service that we're doing now.
Armando, um, question, so the total estimated. It's ten point six. Would you think three point three is gonna be spent this year? And the next year, we're gonna spend seven. The, the remainder? Okay, so in our CIP. Do we have, do you have that money? In there for the, for this year and, uh, obviously you have it this year, but for next year, did, did you budget seven million dollars for this project?
Yes, we did budget the whole cost of the project through these uh. Two fiscal years, and I believe we even had a third fiscal year, uh, just in case we elongate the project to, to, to the right.
But, but you did budget at least ten and a half million dollars?
But that's in a budget that's probably bigger than what you would be comfortable approving.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
I mean, it might be a hundred and fifty million dollar budget. And it would be in there, so this is the step that we added. To avoid getting, you know, partway into a project with bids and then come back later and say. Well, we need to cut, and then we're like, well, it's too late to cut, we already went out to bid, so this is, approving this is to try to avoid that whole situation. Or not approving.
Well, approving, well, approving the next step would be to basically approving your. Capital expenditures for the next year.
But, but if we get to next year and, and let's say that the budget is, I don't know the numbers, nobody knows. Say it's a hundred and fifty and we're like, well, we, w- we're drawing the line at a hundred and twenty or a hundred or whatever it is. Then projects like this that have already gone out to bid. Will be difficult to cut at that point.
So, yeah, it, it will be interesting to see if their estimate of ten point six is true. So when the bids come in, it may be twelve, and then we'll all have, we'll all have a decision to make on, do we take this project and postpone it a year or two out? To kind of stretch the CIPs out. That's the only way I think.
I mean, what, what kind of, so it's. It's younger than you or older than you?
Or the same age.
It's a, it's actually younger than me.
So if we waited until it was the same age as you.
We'd never get.
We'd never get there.
As you today, as you today.
I'm still struggling with, you know, redundancy capacity, I mean, all these issues, I, I.
I mean, how urgent is this project?
It's one of the best, one of the highest urgencies we have. We have zero ability uh to mobilize to the site.
Yeah, no, it's a tight spot there, and it's right in the middle of a lot of things, those are apartment buildings and then.
So out of all the projects that you're gonna present this year, this is the number one?
This one and the warp ten. They're, they're connected, by the way, this feeds the headworks, so it's, and like I said. A huge majority of the flows here um within South Palm Desert go through this, so all the businesses. That we all uh tend to within the highway uh one eleven corridor arrive here.
Armando, this is a different themed question to this, but off to the west, it looks like there's the CV link is uh continues on into Palm Desert. But towards the east, um unless the city of Indian Wells decides to. Have a motion for reconsideration, um, uh, there wouldn't be a CV link there, but does this project? Anticipate that there's room to put a CV link to the north, uh, sandwiched in between the whitewater. Storm channel soon to be the phase two uh recharge uh ponds a- and this project?
We have been working closely with the CV link folks. So that when we do our entrance, because we're gonna reconfigure uh the lift station entrance. That we incorporated uh some other setbacks, or at least our improves are setback. To allow them the ability to do any improvements in front of our lift station and so that we're both in. Unison and reverse when all the concrete is poured, it's, it's all one. Like, nobody thought that there, we'd be coordinated, we'd definitely be coordinated.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yeah, Armando, is there any need to talk about the Palm Desert replenishment facility phase two in regards to this project?
There, there's no need, uh, there's a huge uh difference in elevation. And um I think all the work within the Palm Desert replenishment will be at the bottom. And most of the effort that we have will be on the top. The, there is a slope protection already on the south. So I don't anticipate uh. There's be, there'll be some coordination um because of the force main. But I think we can take care of that within the specs and the uh contractors.
Would you say this has to start before the Palm Desert replenishment facility? I mean, don't you cross the stormwater area right where?
Yes, uh.
Just to the east of Cook?
It, it will have to, yes, it will have to start now, like we're doing it today. So that we can make some improvements on the force main. But uh necessarily, the majority of work would be on, on top.
How, how low is it below ground surface, like at the bottom of the, I'm assuming it goes under the channel?
It goes under.
How far down is it before, you know, from surface?
If I'm allowed a little, a little bit of liberty, it's beyond uh twelve feet.
Twelve feet?
Yeah, we have to keep it below the scouring depth.
Yeah.
So will there be a new line that gets put across? What, you, will you put, install a new line?
No, we're, you're gonna rely on the existing, um, there's plans to reinforce the existing with some concrete. A cradle to protect it. But, but not a new list, I mean, not a reinforcement.
Yeah, okay.
And the lifespan of that pipeline um is adequate?
We, we have looked at that once, um, and definitely operations staff is advocating for additional one. We're trying to do the improvements that we think are critical. And that force main probably be another project that we'll be bringing back to you at a, at future date. It's not as aged as the lift station, but it's something that we can look back. Or be part of a five-year CFP. At a future date.
Thank you.
Okay. Think we've heard it.
I'd uh move approval of this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Passed by though.
Thank you.
Next is seven C. Paving the parking lot. What is this, phase three? Phase three, yeah. Good morning.
Good morning, um, for the record, my name is Sabrina Neese and junior manager for domestic water and general district. The item before you today is a request for, to authorize the general manager to award a construction contract with Pav West Inc. As the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of one million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and eighteen cents. For the Palm Desert Operations Parking Lot Rehabilitation Phase Three Project, specification number twenty twenty five dash twelve. And approve additional expenditures for a total request of one million, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This item or this project is included in the general district capital improvement budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. In the amount of two point five million dollars, um, so there's no adverse impact to our budget. Uh, we received a total of ten bids uh for this project ranging between approximately one point seven million and two point five million dollars. And I would be happy to answer any additional questions you have.
This is the type of project that you're, if you wanna save money, this is the one that you would. You would hold off on. I mean, when times are tough, right, and if you look at your house and if you're, you're your own person. And what, what are you gonna? Paving your driveway or fixing your roof or your, right?
You should see the parking lot in my business. We were gonna do the, we needed to repave it about thirty years ago, we still haven't done it. But we're not really public facing, well, I mean, this isn't either, but. Part of these were.
But as you all have already remarked, we ask for authority to advertise solicit bids. We've exercised the contractor industry, we've gotten a great return, it is below.
They were good bids.
It's below the budgeted amount. So, you know, the time to have stopped this was when we asked for authorization to solicit bids.
I agree.
On the matter of cost, the engineer's estimate was two point six, or sorry, two point three million. So the lowest bid was definitely um out of expectations for us, uh, we, we did think. You know, if we got lucky, we might be at two point two, but uh we did get several that were under two million dollars. So I don't know that we're gonna see any cost savings in the future. This is also part of the general district fund, which uh multiple funds contribute into. Um, and similar to last year, we did budget for it, we had two point seven million last year, uh, we did budget. Two point five million this year to try to bring the project costs down and we're much, much less than that. This facility also, or the parking lot rather, uh, is at the end of its useful life, it's uh more than thirty years old. We had shared pictures uh during solicitation of bids to identify why it needs to be replaced. Um, I don't know that we could do much with it at this point if we don't replace it.
Yeah, you would just do it later, and, and as you say, it could be significantly more. Later, these are good bids, I mean, I'll move approval of this thing.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Four, one, passed, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I really can't see anything anymore. D, hi David, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Alright, the purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute a check request. To the Imperial Irrigation District in the amount of two million, one hundred thirty four thousand, nine hundred seventy four dollars for the relocation of existing transmission poles. To make way for the Thousand Palms Channel Improvement Project. Request also includes uh a task order to Clark Land Resources to provide support and land acquisition services. To make way for the project as well as some additional environmental services, uh, task order to Q three. In the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. The total cost of this request is two million, five hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred and twenty four dollars. Project is included in this year's capital improvement uh budget. In the amount of six million dollars, uh, therefore there'd be no adverse impact to the budget with this, with this request. The project is the final link. For making way for storm flows to reach the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel. Uh, right now, there, that channel, this channel was built in the um late sixties, early seventies, it does not have the capacity. For the one hundred year flood. Uh, so the project will bring this, this uh channel into current standards. And allow it to have the capacity, in addition to that, the. Easterly bank of this channel is in a, what's called a levee condition, which means the. Hundred year water surface elevation is higher than the properties on the other side of the, of the bank. Uh, and so this will allow for us to certify this portion of the. Dyke, what is a dyke effectively, uh, with FEMA and ensure that those folks are protected. And I'll stop there and take any questions.
Questions for David? Is there a motion approved, seven D?
Yeah, I'll move approval.
All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Passed by though.
Thank you.
And then. Winning the award for the most attachments online. Seven E, I didn't count them even, I, did we go into double letters?
Good morning. Uh, apologize for that, thanks for, for reviewing this item.
I have my limits.
As always, uh, we know it takes a little time to go through that, those attachments are, are, are the same attachments that we include. Every year. This is, um, this item is requesting approval to update CBWD's local SEQA guidelines for. The implementation of SEQA, this is an annual update, the last one we did was in September uh twenty twenty four. This recognizes the changes that have occurred at the state level, uh, under SEQA, there's various assembly bills. Um, that have been captured in a memo from BB and K. We work with BB and K under their program five, as it's called, to keep our SEQA guidelines active um as a, a public agency. And recognizing all the changes that um have occurred and ensuring the board that we're im- implementing all those compliance requirements. Um, there's a few examples that we uh included in the staff report, they are summarized in the, the memo attachment from BB and K. There's also a redline version of the SEQA guidelines, if you wanted to see exactly what has changed from last year. Um, like I said, the forms are all the same forms. Um, that CBWD uses when we are um processing SEQA requirements. One of the major, I think, changes was that the Office of Planning and Research, known as OPR, has changed their name. And their um, their website, now they are the Land Use and Climate Action. Office, so there, that is one of the major changes, obviously, there's um, you know, filing fees that have been. Updated as well, slight increases, nothing major, so overall, there's no major changes here to our SEQA guidelines, so with that, I'll, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you.
We do this program for over two hundred clients, so we're not reinventing the wheel or doing this memo just for CBWD, so. This district as well as our other clients just pay a fraction of the cost of this service. We also have client portals for all our clients that have all these documents ready to be used, so it's not like we have one binder somewhere in the district's offices.
Thank you. What are we gonna do with all the money we save? So, uh. Is there a motion to approve this environmental? Locosico, seven E.
A second.
Fair enough, um, all in favor say aye. Aye, passed by though. So the lawyers are responsible for all those.
Lawmakers are, not the lawyers.
Yeah, well, yeah, you're meeting the needs, I get it, okay. So, uh, eight A. Did we have anything?
We did not have any this week.
Remember anything?
Yeah, surprising.
Why don't we go into board general comments, Director Nelson?
No comments this one. No comments, John.
Okay.
Uh, quick comment, uh, just wanted to say that I ran into Senator Caballero. At the League of California Cities, Long Beach, uh, last week. And uh, I, I thanked her on behalf of uh CBWD for her uh work uh in getting that bill passed. That's gonna be very beneficial for us, so. It was great that I was able to do that, so. Just wanna let you know.
Thank you, I think, is that the letter I just signed?
Oh, you're sending, you're sending her a letter?
Yeah. Yeah, do you wanna scribble something?
No, no, no.
Remember me?
No, you're fine.
No, we appreciate, uh, Cavaiera, so, uh, bit, that was actually a big deal. So I, I honestly didn't think we'd get that, I was very happy. No, uh, besides that. No, uh besides that, I don't have any comments. Are there any board requests for future agenda items? Are you none? Meeting reports, why don't we start with the top? Director Bianco, September twenty-fourth.
Uh golf, we we talked about the mapping that's going on for the golf courses that staff's been working on. I think it'll be a good tool for a lot of the golf courses, um especially to separate some of the homeowners associations from where the golf course is and to give some of these golf courses an idea of how much water that they're using and and to see if we can maybe they don't really realize how much they are compared to their peers. And so that that may be a good tool. But it's a lot of work for the staff. Uh I've talked about some timelines for um for uh some of these golf courses to get hooked up to uh non-potable water. And went over some of their water use um for the past year.
Thank you. Uh this uh four forty meeting, Director Nelson?
Yes, this was uh primarily to just go over the main principles of uh agreement between the California parties. And um uh so we did that.
Was I aware of that meeting? Maybe I was and I couldn't make it. I shouldn't look it up right now. I thought it was, yeah, I was not available. You're right. It's uh September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Cal Mutuals recognizing CBWD.
Yeah, that was a, that was their annual conference, uh annual conference for Cal Mutuals. That started on, started on a Sunday, also in Long Beach. So uh Sunday was a was a dinner uh where they presented CBWD with a an award for big systems helping small systems. Um kinda highlighting uh the efforts of the the task force that we've built to consolidate small water systems. So that was, that was good that they did that. And um and then uh Monday, so I was, it's actually two days, but Monday was the uh conference. Uh and I was on a panel there um uh with some other folks. Uh and that was it. It was nice.
Great. Yeah. Uh October third, State of the Palm Desert City. Looks like we had four there. I'm the only one that wasn't there.
Yeah, we were all there.
I was impressed by the attendance there. I mean, there was a lot of people there. I mean, for a city of only fifty thousand people, there was at least o- over five hundred.
Yeah, there were there were four to five hundred. Yeah, it was uh very impressive. Uh they did a good job. They they really did highlight their uh surf park. And um so after the, after the meeting, I went across the street and uh they're making great headway on that project. And um there uh it's um they're highlighting the fact that they are removing turf in order to uh make way for increased water consumption. And the the net of that will be a decrease in water production. So um I thought that, you know, new development you know, is offsetted by uh conservation methods was, is a good story to tell there.
Largest wave park in the United States.
Yeah.
Do they have a, and actually, I spoke with somebody who was in attendance, who asked me later, is it true they're gonna use negative water? I'm like, well, yeah, could they? I remember when they came to us, it was a few years ago, and they says, we we have a plan to actually generate through savings more water than what we're going to use. But uh, you know, people, that resonates with people.
It really does.
And and almost seems impossible, but but it is possible. You just have to get ahead of it and and do it. But do they have a, do they state when they think they're gonna open that?
Yeah, it's uh, I think s- uh spring or summer of twenty-six, so it's next year.
Coming up. Real nice amenity for Palm Desert.
I'm, I was, I was really impressed with the construction across the street, too. It's coming along well.
I should go look. Oh, you weren't by the toilet?
Thank you so much.
Better than yours.
And we could hear that.
Director Aguilar, October eighth.
John, that was a discussion with Carrie and with Jim to uh deal with a little bit of frustration that I'm experiencing about uh this ID eight issue going several different directions and none of them seem to be very productive. So um we talked about some options. I'm, you know, I'm concerned we have four major developers that we're currently holding up um moving forward with some kind of a plan. So I'm hoping that perhaps today in our closed session, we can get some resolution.
Appreciate that. I'll I'll add a meeting. Uh yesterday, I had Desert Valleys Builders Association. Uh our first meeting since Gretchen Gutierrez retired and moved up to Washington to be closer to family and James Brown, you're, who's been around a long time with DBBA is our executive director now. Pretty much the same theme as far as we're concerned. Um they're they're um hoping to hear some progress on the plant check uh delays. And I think we're, we're hoping to hear that as well. Yeah, to Carrie. So we're we don't need to hear it today, but unless you want to, it's not on the agenda.
No, we can do it. We can do it next meeting. You ready?
Oh, oh, perfect. So it is on the agenda. Yay.
Yeah, I didn't know because you just got back whether you're gonna be able to do it today or not.
Alright. Yeah, no, I I told them that it was in the works and that, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight and we're awaiting more information. So I look forward to your report. Do we have any other meetings?
Uh I have a few, uh John. Uh on October first, uh we had a follow-up meeting with the California Farm Water Coalition's uh succession uh committee. Uh that's moving along very well uh in finding a replacement for Mike Wade. Uh on ten six, I I participated in a Todd Groundwater Modeling um update uh with uh Todd Groundwater uh and uh Robert Chang. Offered up some ideas about um uh the modeling in terms of the, they they had a best case and worst case scenario. And I'm, and and I'm kinda focusing in on, well, if the board wants to uh pull some triggers, move water around, what what does that do, the modeling? So they're gonna be working on that. Um then on ten seven, there was a, on October seventh, there was a Section Five Contractors meeting for the seven basin states update, um which they're in Utah this morning. Uh negotiating there. Um there is a November eleventh um kind of soft deadline for uh the seven states to come up with uh either a seven basin states plan or lower basin plan. Uh so they're working on that.
November eleventh is the deadline.
Yeah, it's kind of a soft deadline.
Imposed deadline?
Yeah, it's a soft deadline from the Bureau of Reclamation that wants to be able to uh want to be able to include any plans in their um in their uh environmental documents and and in the modeling going, in the modeling going forward on plan alternatives uh that they would present. You know, for looking for an ultimate plan. So in other words, it's, you know, they need to have a range of alternatives and then put that out on the street and then come up with a final plan. And so of November eleventh is kind of that soft deadline. Yeah. And then uh on the ninth and tenth, just last week, I attended a Aqua Region Six and Seven uh meeting. Uh that's a Central Valley. Uh Vince Fong did a uh good update on the sixth on water blueprint. And then on the following day, uh there was a tour of Grimway Farms and their carrot shed. But interested to me was the Rose Dale Rio Bravo Spreading Basins. And so um I got a full report on their activities and what what they're up to. And uh uh since they're a partner of ours in one of our um pots of water supply, it was a interesting visit. So.
Yeah, anybody else?
Yeah, I had, um, October first, uh staff and I met with Leadership Council um regarding the environmental impact report for Thermal Ranch specific plan. Uh they had a number of questions uh related to water infrastructure, kind of our role in approving the WSA. Uh they wanted to know a little bit more about the conditions. So I think we did a good job explaining the regional benefits that uh um are gonna be created when we build a, we have a reservoir that we're gonna have them build. And so we were able to show them a pretty cool map of our pressure zone and how that that particular component there of that project is gonna, is gonna help with with the bigger areas. So I thought it was a good meeting. I I think we answered uh all their questions and uh so I think we did good. Thank you, Carrie. That went well. And that was it.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to approve per diems for meetings reported on?
Is there a motion? I'll second that. Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed by O. Next, General Manager Report.
Yes, sir. I don't have anything this morning, but if it pleases the Chair, I will cede my remaining time to Sylvia, who is going to make an introduction of a new staff member.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Uh good morning, uh Board members. I'm very excited to announce that our new Deputy Clerk, Francesca Reyes, who is coming um to us from the city of Palo Alto, has officially started with the Clerk's office. So Francesca, if you'd like to just stand up or say a couple of words, please come to the podium. After very lengthy recruitment process, we finally made the
Welcome. You must be very high quality.
Yes, I'm actually um very happy to say good morning. I had a lot of good evenings to counsel that went for many hours. So I'm looking forward to these meetings.
Oh, this is an upgrade, though.
You have no idea. So um I'm very excited to get working on this. I'm familiar with some of the systems that um Sylvia works with. Also having um a long, um I wanna say career and experience with also the town of Atherton. And then prior to that with the city of Redwood City. Um I really love the field of the city clerk. Um it's such a wonderful, unique unique kind of experience, very hands-on. I know that with the city clerk title, it's really like an umbrella that touches on every different department. So I'm actually looking forward to not only working with you, but also the rest of the departments as well. I I love networking and I love uh meeting new people. I really like the desert. It's, it's a change.
Oh, it's the best.
But
Fog.
No, fog, no, not that much traffic.
Palo Alto either.
You got a little heat, though. That's
And the community here is really, really nice. That being said, people up there are not so nice, but then, you know, I come here and I'm like, oh my god, these people are so nice.
We don't have as many, we don't have as many tech bros here.
Yeah, yeah. But good then, a lot of them work from home. So it's kind of nice to be coming in office often and really getting to know a lot of folks. Thank you.
And and we have dates, not Apple. So. Farmer joke.
I have to get used to the cicadas. And um I'm so used to just hearing turtle doves, so hearing coyotes, I'm like, okay, well, that's a, that's a change.
Yeah, coyotes for sure.
Cicadas, yeah, those are
It it's a wonderful place to live. Uh it really is. Welcome. Any other, uh counsel?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to uh update the board on a major Brown Act law change which which happened under SB seven oh seven. Uh there are various deadlines, uh not anything i- immediate. Some are the first of the year, some are in July of next year. The law changes that apply to all types of public agencies include things such as uh in putting in place on a more permanent basis the right for teleconferencing uh by using the just cause rules and expanding the the just cause categories. Um it also includes expanding to any local e- emergency. It used to be that it only could be used for an actual state cause. Uh copies of the Brown Act need to be sent to each member of the board. Uh it also talks about things uh such as uh teleconferencing does not include if members of the board observe a meeting and not participate via live stream. So those things are fairly straightforward, not a lot of change. However, for an eligible body, legislative body, uh there are some major changes being made. And the definitions of these bodies include an agency, a special district, that has over two hundred employees and has revenues annually of over four hundred million dollars. And uh we are rapidly reaching that level here in terms of revenues uh whi- which will exceed four hundred million dollars. So as a result, there are a number of new procedures that will go into effect in July of next year. Um and most of it has to do with your board clerk. So it's not you necessarily doing too uh too much different. But um the eligible bodies, legislative bodies uh will re- have to have, be required to have uh two-way participation remotely by members of the public. It's no longer an optional uh thing to do. Uh there are new requirements in terms of outreach, making uh reasonable efforts to invite groups that do not usually participate in public meetings, non-English speaking groups, uh and reaching out to the public to make sure as many people participate in meetings as possible. It does require that the agenda, not the agenda packet, but that the a- agenda be translated into certain uh l- uh languages uh beyond, it it based on certain criteria. It does require that um other things having to do with teleconferencing uh locations. And if you use audios, if those are audio visual, you need to also have live streaming available. So uh in terms of translation, in terms of outreach, in terms of having a requirement for teleconference for the public at each meeting, those are major changes. Uh but they do not go into effect until uh middle of next year. And uh there will be various uh workshops that our office is putting on for all of our clients, uh as well as other statewide groups to make sure that all of the criteria are followed and that there is a general uniform uh uh compliance by all public agencies. So major changes coming, not right away, but things that uh we'll be sure to the ship speed on. Thank you, Mr. President.
And just to note, some of those changes may have a financial impact on my department. So don't be surprised if you see budget requests for translation services.
Is there, since it came up, um is there any requirement that we would offer evening meetings? I know we did that a while ago. We stopped because they weren't being attended, but um is that part of this?
No.
No. So you don't have to vary your meeting time or date or anything like that to?
Jeff, I have a question. So that would would these changes in the Brown Act rules uh affect uh committees, like if we had a legislative committee, would it, would it have to be then aired uh with two-way communication as well?
Yes.
So this will apply to any legislative body under the, that meets the uh Brown Act or qualifies on that. So our legislative committee and our public finance committee um will also in our board study sessions and our regular board meetings. So these four meetings are, are bodies.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Just keep us in line, Jeff. Uh alright, I know Carrie, you're on for a departmental report.
And then we have Karen. Need a report on a couple pieces of legislation.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I was just gonna hit some highlights um of what's going on in Development Services, our division. So on August twenty-fifth, um Elizabeth Carrasco took over the position of Acting Development Services Supervisor. Um and then in August, we also made arrangements with an on-call consultant, ERSC. Um and we hired an on-call engineer to help with plan checking. Um we've also enlisted help from some of our project engineers, um one of our domestic water engineers and our sanitation engineer to help um review the, review some of the recent plan submittals and be responsible for some of the plans. Um and then all of our plan checks are now being logged in our planning software called Masterworks. Um and we've used that for years for our CIP projects. Um so then you can see exactly where the plans are at, when they're submitted, who's reviewing them, because they go to multiple departments. And then uh when they get returned back to the um the engineer of record. And then when they return them, so we have like, we have the chronology. And it's not just looking at a spreadsheet, trying to track things. So now it's through a software. So I think that's helpful. And then we've updated the plan check log um to prioritize the plan reviews. And then we've updated the plan check log um to prioritize the plan reviews. Um so that it's easy to see which one is on the sixth plan check or the third plan check or you know, which ones we've had the longest. Um uh you would think that would would have been like kind of a straightforward spreadsheet, but unfortunately, it was just a very long list. Um and every time we received a plan, it just got added to the queue. So you would have you know, the fourth plan check, the fifth, the sixth, and so it was really hard to track like where you were at with plans. So that's all been cleaned up. Um and on October third, we had interviews um and we've made an offer and we've had uh personnel um accept. So on October twentieth, we'll have an employee that was working in finance transferring to engineering and um he'll be taking over one of the positions. Um we recently had um somebody retire in that group, Sarah, and so he'll be replacing her. And then on October twenty seventh, we um extended an offer to another plan checker. So we have somebody from the outside coming in. So we'll have two full-time plan checkers. In addition to if we still need the on-call plan checker um to help supplement and even if we still need out some of our engineering staff to help us just get through this um kind of cyclical cycle of a lot of plan checks. Um so and then we also have a limited term employee that's um working with us. Um that was effective October thirteenth and she has a two-year contract with us um to help while we're doing the ERP implementation. Because we're involved in the land management module of the ERP and making sure that um all of our processes integrate with the new software. So that does take up some of our staff time with the meetings and testing and different things like that. Um so starting um in September, at the beginning of September, we had ninety-eight plans that were in various stages of review as of October thirteenth um yesterday. Um we have forty-three plans in um various stages of review. And this counts water and sewer plans as sep- two separate submittals. 'Cause we might have one development, but we get two separate submittals for water and sewer. So out of out of those forty-three, you know, we could have two sets of plans for one development. Um the oldest plan that we currently have sitting in the queue is from August twenty-fifth. So I think that's a big improvement. Um because prior to that, we had some back from April, May, June. Um and then we do have some plans that are signed, but will show up on our plan check checklist because we're waiting for the developer to provide other documents in order to release those plans. So sometimes it looks like we've had the plans for a while or we haven't released them. Um and it's usually because we're waiting on the developer to provide, you know, the bill of sale or um pay for the plan check fees or to provide the final CAD drawings or something like that. 'Cause there's a there's a list of items that they have to provide in order for us to re- release the plans.
Who has visibility to this tracker tracker?
Um I know we sent out a link, but I I I we can make it available on our website. I think we wanted to do that. And then the Masterworks is available to all of the engineer records. Um because they set up an account, so then they can look and log and the developers can log in and they can see where their plans are at and where their various documents are at.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That sounds very good. I really appreciate that.
That sounds like an excellent resolution with the communications, with the availability of where their where their plans are. And and if, you know, if we could go in and look at that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that's that's actually more than I thought that that you would have. And so I'm very impressed.
Yeah, I mean, I think human nature is, and and I'm not finding fault, but human nature is that when you know somebody's watching, you're more likely to you know, uh more visibility, I think, creates more productivity and um and so that's just the way it is.
Yeah.
That's very helpful.
Accolades for all of this. That's really a big improvement. But I have a question. When you distribute the plans to the departments, do you give them a timeframe?
Yes.
To return those?
Yes. So we typically um we're routing the first plan check and we would tell the developers that's going to have a longer review period because we're giving it to multiple departments. And so we we would like to get down to that being like a four to six week period. Probably right now, it's more of like a six to eight. But what we decided is the first plan check, we're going to ha- just have the plan checker look at and ca- catch any of the glaring errors. Make sure that uh we have a plan check checklist, make sure that the engineer record has has um identified all the things on the checklist. And so once we get them in a little bit better state, then the second plan check will be routed to the different departments. So then they can comment on the technical aspects and not like, oh, they misspelled this word or they didn't include something that we should already be checking on the plan check checklist. Um so that we get more substantial comments or more relevant comments. Um so so between the first and second plan check, you know, we're hoping that that's more of like a you know, six to eight week or maybe an eight week turnaround.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're actively working on how to make this a little more efficient and transparent process. Um I can I can um have send out these bullets if you want them for reference of when you get questions or people and also provide the link um so you can access the spreadsheet if you'd like.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Great.
I'm in um. Sounds like there's been a lot that's been done since September. A lot of staff that you've also, I think, brought on. And um which is good, some some temps it sounded like and uh in in general and and you know, you I think you have a better sense of when it might just be kind of like a strange moment where there's just a lot of plants coming in and maybe it's not normal. But to the point that that for whatever reason, it just becoming the normal. You know, I I'm I'm always open to ensuring that the departments have the proper staff. You know, I know those things are considered during the budget process and and uh but but if it's a, you know, if we're getting to a point where we need more staff, then, you know, I'm always open to to those things too, right? And but that's for you to figure out, right? 'Cause you know, if this is just kind of seasonal or kind of like a strange time during the year, that you're just trying to get over, but.
I mean, we've always, we've only had one plan checker for the past several years. So we we are adding I did make the decision to add a second plan checker permanently. And so I took one of my other positions within my department that we weren't going to um utilize and transferred it, sorry, transferred it to Development Services.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I wonder if if you could, or somebody could reach out to James Brown Yard at D V B A and have them can we send them a link to this uh agenda item and maybe they can share it with their members?
Sure.
'Cause it could be a a win for them too. It'd make them look good that they were able to help elevate the issue.
Sure, I will do that.
And it'll make you look good too.
I'm not worried about that, but thank you.
You know what I mean? It's otherwise, we're just talking among ourselves.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
And then Karen was gonna come up and update you on a couple of pieces of legislation and then come back when everything's done. As I understand.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Karen Borha, the Government Affairs Program Manager. Um I'm here to share that Governor Newsom has signed two of our priority bills um that we've been monitoring through the twenty twenty-five legislative session. Senate Bill four six six and Senate Bill seventy-two, the California Water Plan, which last year was vetoed for um cost issues. They were both authored by Senator Ana Caballero and Director Powell um is sending her a very nice thinking note on our behalf. So starting with Senate Bill four six six, it was signed into law by the governor on October third. It was co-sponsored by C V W D. Um we were able to form a statewide thirty-five agency coalition that included Aqua, C M U A, and then other regional water agencies. Um Senate Bill seventy-two um requires a Department of Water Resources to set long-term water supply targets for twenty fifty with an interim goal of nine million acre feet of additional water conservation or storage by twenty forty. The plan has to include strategies for groundwater recharge, stormwater capture, recycling and demand management while consistently planning for climate change impacts, urban, agricultural, tribal and environmental needs. And the needs of disadvantaged communities. I will also share that SB seventy-two doesn't directly change local water operations, but it sets statewide goals and planning targets for strategies. At the moment, it looks like the requirement on us is going to be to report sort of what are we doing, what are we saving? Um but more will be shared with us after implementation has actually started and the State Water Board meets and has their first sort of committee meeting. Um at the next board meeting, you will be receiving the final written report of the legislative sess- session with a bill matrix showing where the different bills of interest sort of ended up for us. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need funding for Chromium six? That's a that's 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 what we need to be working on.
Sure. Um so yes, we last board meeting in Coachella that I um gave a presentation, I just talked about the PFOS mitigation fund. That was actually vetoed by the governor over the weekend. Um so there is sort of this back and forth, prop four, is there money, is there no money, where is the state budget? So we will continue to certainly advocate for Chromium six funding. Um but with that sort of added piece of information that we thought the PFOS mitigation fund was sort of a done deal, he was gonna sign it and he ended up vetoing it over the weekend.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other departmental reports? Hearing none. At this time, the board recessed in the closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. Following closed session, we will reconvene and report out. All right, so the regular session, the open session is is reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from the closed session and with no further business, we are adjourned.